We're waiting to accept the minutes of February 10. Second, can you give us any changes, suggestions, comments? On Thursday, I opposed, yes, and we should adopt it. Consent agenda, I have nothing to remove from the consent agenda. Okay. So, is your motion to suspend the agenda? Second, would you be second to include the agenda? On Thursday, I.
I.
Try again. I was joking, I have two tonight. All three say aye.
Aye.
And yes. Okay, there's our consent agenda. Takes us to our. Okay, so. And look, I am 23, please.
It's a resolution authorizing making move for real estate at market value from R S A seventy-five feet.
Okay, so let's continue our session one more last time. Is anyone here to testify outside? Just by last time, too. All right, welcome back, good to see you. Did you bring a room?
Welcome, good evening. Good evening, mayors, members of city councils, ladies and gentlemen, city clerk, I'm Roche Wacker. Last month I come back and talk more about this. I had said that you're voting for a phrase all property partner now. But we know from the presentation by the city assessor, that's not what's done. The residential property is owed in market value, whereas the, that's a wealth tax of about two point seven percent, which is more than one lived or one living population. But at the same time, the tax on commercial property is an income tax. And that's different. And the one thing, the income is more easily jumbled around than the value of a property. As you've seen in two of the numbers, the seventy ninety items, one of them is leasing to affiliated company at far less than the market value, another leasing to an affiliated company far more than market value. And so, in a way, it's not fair to base the one type of property on income and the other on market value. And in particular, if you own a home, for instance, and you spend half a year in Florida, you're not allowed to write off half your taxes because you're not using the home fully. Whereas if you got your commercial property, if you're getting less income, you don't have to pay the one property tax on it. And some of these have extra bedrooms because you're in an industry, you can't say, well, I'm not using, I deserve to pay less property tax. Whereas, once again, on commercial property, it's not using all the space they have and pay less tax. There are some additional features in terms of, if you have a rising economy, the, according to the presentation by the city assessor, the market value used for residential property are generally within the last year. Whereas because less commercial property is served, they go about five years to figure the value of commercial properties. And you have the market value of property rising substantially, having one case the property being assessed on a recent sales, the other case on sales, you know, a couple of years in the head, that's not quite fair. And the last thing is that apparently, once again, they're based only on one year's income and not on future income. And once again, in a stable economy, there is maybe some justification for that. But if we have an economy right now where the rents are going up much faster than inflation, which I understand has been sort of the case in some places lately, then the value of those future years' rents are much higher than the value of the current year's rents. And therefore, once again, it should affect the value of the property. Whereas if you're doubting the property based only on the current year's income, that's not quite fair. And the last item I'll point out is, if you were to sell your property, you would probably pay a six percent commission to the realtor. Plus, you'd have to spend thousands of dollars to fix it up to get the sale price. But you're paying taxes on the gross price you would receive, whereas, once again, the commercial property is based on income after expenses, so they're only paying taxes on the net. And I figure overall, what this means is that the commercial property is getting like a ten percent tax break on their property taxes because of the different assessment numbers. And we've been told in the past, well, that's required by a street board decision or state law or something, but the city solicitor might want to tell me what it is, but it says the city doesn't provide legal advice. I think that is kind of unfair, the city needs to justify what it's doing. And my personal feeling is that it needs to quit doing what it's doing. And so, I'm going to suggest three courses of action, this is my take. Number one, is investigate, see if what I'm saying is true, by comparing the assessments they're getting on the commercial property based on the income method, of what they would be doing if they based them on the valuation, and see if there really is the difference I think there is. So as I say, is, I figure ten percent average say why? And if you discover that there really is a ten percent difference, then you would probably be forced to take some action, to get either statutes changed, or policies changed, or whatever, equalize the taxes between the commercial and residential property. Second thing you can do is actually say, well, we don't have to go into this, or this, let it go right. And that's probably the best I can hope for. And the third thing is, you deny that this difference exists, and say, of course, it can't be true. There's no way this is true, it can be, we're not going to allow anyone to investigate. And I think that's a mistake, because if, say, the closed dialogue team decided to investigate and you denied it existed, that would be a really nice story. So I hope that at least you will, or how other people will look into it. City government doesn't look into it, I'll anticipate for some of the city councilors who belong to the rest of organizations, don't feel like the city council themselves should investigate this difference and pursue legislation or litigation. One minute, thank you.
Thank you, any questions? Good to see you, Zonos. Any last questions to testify? CNN, close the panel here, my clerk, I am twenty-three, please.
It's an ordinance, a pending court ordinance, is title one ten of chapter fourteen rules and conduct, article fourteen dash two miscellaneous place regulation, section fourteen dash two dash seven, designated tobacco non-use areas providing sub tobacco products in single parking garages.
Our members of the council have noticed this report to ordinance is also an revised ordinance and supplemental report. Thinking of the report first, city administration desires to regulate the use of tobacco-related products in cities three, municipal, and parking garages. Parking committee considered this policy on December twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, voted in favor of banning the use. If approved, decided to reduce it, the city will relax, it's a form of tobacco use in garage prohibited. The ordinance also includes an amendment in respect to the entrance of the library, the tobacco library, the city's number of things smoking for the travel program in Main Street. So, you then look at your supplemental ins sorte of ordinance, for former blue batteries, staff work program, forced to clarify the city is not reviewing smoking, travel portion, any public right, but going on private property, just for the distance of the fifty feet or distance into the front of the library. Got any questions?
Any questions?
Would this proposal prevent people from wearing their cars from smoking as they leave the parking garage?
Once they, once they get out of the garage. But you're lighting up in the garage.
I'm listening, isn't it forceless?
More than likely, the department of parking enforcement officers. I'm sure the comfort to the enforcement officers have the ability to take some, you know, to get a little bit.
CNN, one more vote here, anyone who wants to testify, say.
Hello again, everybody, I'm still Roche Wacker. And I think you're still having to mark this right, right? Okay, for instance, about this for a while, if someone wanted to smoke in front of a library, or they have to do a step out in the street and they can smoke. And I don't think that's really what you need. We shouldn't have people standing in the streets smoking. In my heart, you don't know what part of the streets, travelway or not. I think that you need to say, okay, we really don't want people smoking in front of the library. So, the only exception to smoking in the street is if you're number one, smoking in your car. Number two, you have the window cover that you use in your ashroom. You're not, you know, having the window open, sitting in your car, popping. Why does that mean different than if you were doing the same thing on the sidewalk? So I think that you need to clarify that the only exemption is not if you run the travelway, if you're in a moving vehicle in the travelway.
Thank you, anyone else? Good to see you, thanks so much. Anyone else wish to testify? CNN, close the panel here, my clerk, I am twenty-three, please.
An ordinance, a pending court of ordinance, is title two traffic code, chapter eighteen parking, article eighteen dash three parking meters, amending schedule X to establish a three-hour meter timeline for certain parking spaces located on Store Street near Dixon Avenue.
The members of the council, in December, Tom, Alan, Louis, Conrad, and T K, requested that limit three hour meters to create jumps for the parking vehicles of Store Street and Dixon Avenue. I especially concerned that the ten-hour timeline means great, big impact is establishment. Parking committee, we need that, on December twenty-third, and voting to, the council, limited three hour zone for the section of Store Street. The total of five parking spaces will be three hour meters, but entry portions. Not too late versus.
Have we received any other requests from any other businesses or property owners? Obviously, I know there's a little on our agenda, but from anybody else trying, looking to change either on the Store Street or anywhere else?
Good evening, council, my understanding is there's been one other request, which the party can be discussed. It's January meeting, which will be coming forward next month. And it's for a restaurant establishment that is on Pleasant Street near the federal courthouse. And I believe the parking committee has recommended the same consideration of the ten hours zone, or being limited in a small area to a three hours zone.
Who else?
So, Marsh, the spot, the parking spot that is at this corner that has the red bag on it, what's happening with that spot?
There's been some concern about, since the parking spaces were painted out to be North Dixon Avenue and Store Street on the west side of the road, to go around the front of the Conrad and T Gallery, that there is a conflict relative to, parking sit backs in the crosswalk that is there. So we have closed that because of concerns about site distance and pedestrian safety.
Is that, is there anything to change, so there's no other spot there?
Yes, and we're waiting for spring, although spring apparently is here today, so we'll get on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to testify, say? CNN, one more vote here, my clerk, I am twenty-three, please.
It's an ordinance, a pending court ordinance, is title two traffic code, chapter eighteen parking, parking meters by amending schedule X concerning certain meter parking spaces on Ford Street.
The members of the council, the city's installed ten hour parking meters on the street, spaces located on Ford Street. The requirement, the adoption of the resolution must be parking at Ford Street for three, three hour times on the spaces. And they are headed for those that the city can wear approximately four, three and parking spaces, the three spaces on Ford Street. These spaces will be located on the west side of Ford Street, between Mark Governor and the Stan Street, paying the parking spaces will be, have been established. Some of the cities, forty-eight hour ordinance, they shall be no timeline for the free spaces. On all new parking spaces on Ford Street, there shall be ten hour meter spaces on all new parking ordinance. Parking committee goes to recommend this, and the council proceed with the results.
Any questions?
So, just to clarify my understanding, is there any prohibition on anybody going to the corner, being able to park in that all day?
Anyone else? CNN, open the public hearing, anyone wish to testify, say? CNN, possible, Karen, my clerk, I am twenty-three, please.
It's an ordinance, a pending court ordinance, is title two traffic code, chapter seventeen vehicles and traffic, article seventeen four, non-traffic vehicles, section seventeen dash four dash three, one-way streets concerning parking.
What's just been, like, asked, was the marsh would come forward and.
We get to five pages. Those recommendations.
Good evening again, so, this ordinance and others are going to be letting public hearings on the following it are related to the ongoing narrow streets project that the parking committee's been working on since January of seventeen. This is pretty zoned for a neighborhood, which is the old North Seventh Tier Neighborhood. And after two bullet meetings and lots of work by the committee, the following ordinances are coming forward to implement the recommendations that the neighborhood has agreed on. This first one is taking Purple Street and bringing it to one-way traffic flowing to the east, so flow from, basically, Longford Street to Bradley Street. And there's the other ordinance related to parking on Purple Street after this public hearing.
Any questions for a resolve? Open the public hearing, say, I'm wishing, I'm wishing to testify.
Is that the only change through the parking, Purple Street, four-four?
Would you like to talk about this one?
No, we're good.
Okay, pardon, anyone else? CNN, one more vote here. My clerk, I am twenty-three, please.
It's an ordinance, a pending court ordinance, is title two traffic code, chapter eighteen parking, article eighteen dash one, stop and standing in parking, section eighteen dash one dash six. Parking prohibited at all times and designated places in schedule one.
Thank you again, Roner, so this is a change to rival streets. Seventeen different street segments, it's probably about ten streets or so, that will basically implement the recommendations that were discussed during the public meetings. They've got Allen Street, Bradley Street, Curtis Avenue, Franklin Street, Granite Avenue, Highland Street, Jackson, London, Martin, Perkins, Langford, Tremont, and Walker. And the schedule discusses where parking is going to be prohibited on each one of those streets that's outlined in the ordinance.
Any questions? CNN, thank you very much. Oh, testify, anyone wish to testify, say? CNN, possible, Karen, my clerk, I am twenty-three, please.
It's an ordinance, a pending court ordinance, is title two traffic code, chapter eighteen parking, article eighteen dash one, stop and standing in parking, section eighteen dash one dash seven, one. Parking prohibited during certain hours and runs designated places.
Thank you very much, expand.
Now, this is the last ordinance here, I remember the council will implement an automatic winter parking ban, which will be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, on the following streets. This ban will be effective January first through March fifteenth annually. Trip Street between Bradley and Jackson, Curtis Avenue, Harrod Street, Highland Street between Langford and Jackson, Jackson Street between Tremont and Highland, London Street, Franklin the Church, Martin Street, Quill Street, Langford Street, even the Franklin, and Tremont Street, Cosby, two, or State Street. Having any answering questions?
Thank you, would, would London December considered as well?
So, the parking committee did talk about this, and we looked at other candidates. Some candidates will define winter as starting around Veterans Day, going until as late as April fifteenth. The parking committee's feelings on this were to try to avoid the holiday season of Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years, and basically implement it New Year's Day through mid-March, to try and what, what they thought was the peak winter condition season, recognizing it does snow outside at that time, but those are time zones, it affects the snowing, so we most likely on the street.
I have the same question, thanks, Ron.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the hearing, anyone wish to testify? CNN, possible, Karen?
My clerk, I am twenty-three, please.
It's a resolution prohibiting the zone two hundred and five thousand dollars for the Brunchdale Bridge replacement project. C I P is a four ninety-eight, costing a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the actual state bridge program funds, and authorizing the issuance of funds announced in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the local agency managed for C I P four ninety-eight.
Thank you very much, expand. Members of the council, the, this project is proceeding environmental, for being.
Members of the council, the, uh, this project is proceeding in environmental, we've state approvals, scheduled, still, uh, we have the bill numbers. The, um, visually appropriated twenty thousand dollars, but we're running to affect the twenty-five thousand dollars, this is the same case as the election. So the request is to appropriate the difference, twenty-five thousand dollars for the remaining portion to get to forty-five thousand dollars to complete the sales match. Person to man. Say nothing. If approved, what construction site will we intend to fix? Just for a note, see, council, we're very responsible in making sure the management of this project, this was delayed by the state of the nature, just because of all the issues that they've been dealing with. I, I, I am just, it was just more generally, you know, wanting to set expectations for the work. Good evening, Your Honor. The Birchdale Road Bridge is due to be bid actually in the next couple of weeks, and with the start of construction in June, July, and the hope is to actually finish this bridge this year. Both the bridges, Birchdale Road and Hudson Turnpike are being built at the same time. They're almost identical bridges, and so the contractor will finish Birchdale Road first. When that's done, they'll roll over and do Hudson Turnpike, so we're hoping by June of twenty-twenty-one, both bridges will be done. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. To your persons, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify in the session? See none? Close public hearing? And program 23, please.
A resolution appropriating the sum of two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars for the Hudson Turnpike Bridge replacement project, CIP three sixty-one, accepting a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in the Hunter State Bridge program funds, and authorizing the issuance of funds in an outstanding amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the local agency managed for CIP three sixty-one.
Much extended.
On the same scenario, please.
Questions on this one? Okay. See none? Open public hearing. Anyone wish to testify? See none? Close public hearing? And program 23, please.
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinance is Title one General Code, Chapter six Recreation, Article six dash one Rules and Regulations for Parks.
Members of the council, as we're looking at the regulations, we, related to, that we previously talked about in the ordinance for smoking, and also the Popular Recreation Project Committee, we began to discuss that it should be also a city regulation, actually.
Any questions, Your Honor? See none? Open public hearing. Anyone wish to testify? See none? Close public hearing? The last public hearing, program 23, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents in the Eagle Highway Improvement Program Support Project, CIP number seventy, and authorizing the use of highway reserve funds for this project.
Thank you very much.
Members of the council, you'll see on, you have a three-page report, you'll see your report, there is a link count of all the projects that were completed, you start on page one, this part of the fiscal year nineteen budget, subsequent, following fiscal year, there was additional money that was provided, remember, we brought in a million dollars. You can see where those roads are laid out, and then in fiscal year twenty, twenty budget, approximately two-point-zero-five billion dollars of part of the budget with these ones. And if you go down halfway, two goes in the way down, the second page, you'll see the other section of roads that were completed last construction season, that's the ones that was from Black Oak beside Drive, White Road, North Chippewa and Pleasant. The following, now the following of that page, on page two, you'll see a list of streets that are programmed to be completed this construction season, so in twenty-twenty, that you've already set aside the dollars to complete. So the Blake Street, Section Blake Street, or full, Blake, Borough Road, River, Lumbering, Downing Street, Thorough Street, Mariner Bridge, Slippery Street, Center to Pleasant, Bridge Road, Fair Pond Road, and Washington Street. Then if you go to the last page of that report, based on new funding that the general service department has received for building the Harvey, the Squirt, the dollars that are over, recommendation is to do the following sections, Bill Street, Kent Street, Ubby Street, which is the center to the forest, Ubby Street, for us to Franklin, Pathway to Road, Bridge to Lane, Bubba Terrace, Wyatt Street, Valley Street, Watton Street. Then, in addition to that, you have seven hundred and forty-nine, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars they received from the state as part of a two-year, uh, award from the state, and recommendation there is implementing roads, Section implementing roads, Section Hall Street, Section of the State Street, Section of the Turnpike, Section of Shaco, Section of County Road, Section of Union Drive. So in essence, this last page represents the opportunity to have this additional road that done through the road program, and those are all being done this year. The reason you need to have a public hearing or a review is because that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that last section, is not tied to the budget you ordered on June, the previous top section of that was, you've already appropriated all the dollars necessary to do the top section. You don't necessarily need to do all the streets, but if the money's already approved of those, the wide section, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, you have to vote to appropriate those dollars to make them available for staff to actually construct whatever roads are to be constructed.
Thank you very much. Open public hearing. Anyone wish to testify? Can you hear me?
I appreciate the counsel. My name is Jamie Perry, the director. For a hundred-and-fifteen years, we were siding on River Road. Up here tonight, not myself, but just, I was here for Monday. I was there for the part where Bob Road probably pinned his worst, and I promised the mayor tonight that I would share a short story. I'll keep it especially short. It was about, let's see, fifty-five years ago, on my way home from Sunday School, with my brother and sister, my older brother who picked us up, he was sixteen years older. I was probably about eight or so years old, maybe semi-rate, and my closest siblings who were three years older, we challenged my older brother as to how fast we could get the whole station bike going on Bob Road. And the reality is, the peak speed we reached on Bob Road was indeed ninety-five miles an hour. And today, five miles an hour is pretty tough on Bob Road. So what I'm trying to say is, fifty-five years ago, Bob Road was much, much, much better road than it is today. And my challenge to members of the council and city administration, I think everybody should take quick to down Bob Road, any slow to might be more fitting. But my comment is, as a business owner out there, and speaking for the other three business owners, which include Cardinal, Apportute, because Bob Road serves that area, Kentucky Canoe Company, myself, and Murray Farm Greenhouse, and Merino Market, it's, it's tough for all of us in, as businesses, as well as residents out there. And Bob Road feeds tremendous amount of people, traffic from Webster Warner area down into town, and vice versa. And at this point, there's, there's a real significant problem going on because the traffic at River Road has picked up in a huge way. And just the other day, the folks at Cardinal, Apportute, were headed for Chinese food, it's Asher One Gardner, it would have made sense to come down over Car Hill and take Bob Road. Instead, they took River Road down to Borough Road, and then Borough Road to Route Three, and then to hold back. So they drove several miles out of the way to avoid Bob Road. It is tough, it's pretty broken up for about a mile and a half of the road, and we can, we can push this out as far as anybody wants to, but the further we push it, the tougher it's going to be to fix. And there were streets that, lots of streets in town deserve attention, and I guess I'm here advocating from my end of town to say it would be great if, that that could have a strong look, because the roads that may have been mentioned for the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars may well still serve for the next two or three years while Bob Road is getting the attention they deserve sooner, and rather than push Bob Road out another two or three years, because if it gets much rougher, it may be for residential traffic home. So I'm here to ask consideration in that matter, and we'll let you do that if anybody's questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Thank you very much. Appreciate this one. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Murray, was the road paved on fifty-five years ago, or was it gravel road?
No, it was paved, actually, and the, but the pavement's probably a little more marginal now than it was then. Last time, I believe it was paved, was probably in the range of twenty years ago now. And unfortunately, when it was done, it was just part of the vineyards being built. So much of the, the build that was brought in to build the vineyards came across Bob Road from the Webster Warner direction, and those trucks at a hundred thousand pounds beat that freshly paved road pretty, pretty tough. When the road was only a couple of years old, so we go forward seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years, and it gets tougher other than that. And I don't go ninety-five miles an hour.
And who else?
That's Jim. Thank you, Your Honor. Would you believe that I spent a lot of time driving up and down Bob Road back in November? I understand exactly what you're referring to.
You ought to try it now. And follow us around?
Uh, no, I, I have held out that it's, it's worse now, but as far as, I just want to say, you know, the chief was here earlier tonight, and I'm glad he's out there now because I don't know what the statute of limitations is, I'm speeding.
Well, my brother, my brother's the one who does, he was always riding the car, so I don't know. That's a good excuse. They had an accident.
Yeah?
Thank you very much. I appreciate, appreciate your attention. There's something I'll leave. Something I'll leave with this? The most important, I didn't happen to throw down a few pieces of paper in Merino Market for eleven days, and as of tonight, we collected three-hundred-and-eighty-two signatures. So I guess I'm not the only person who thinks Bob Road deserves a little attention. So again, do I leave this with?
Just, just that's, that's, as in law, you guys, in, in interesting way, I will comment too, in reference to that, we didn't restrict the, the names just to con residents.
In checking a few of the pages that people did write their addresses in, there were only three or page that were not upper residents, upper area residents. So, but again, those people that, that they work in Concord, business in Concord, they serve Bob Road and business in their car too. But thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you very much. I was getting too much work.
Anyone else?
Anyone? Hi. My name is Andrew Tommy. I have to second the summary's statement on Bob Road. I mean, Clark may have received a lot of notes from the people on Bob Road, because I went up and down on Sunday, passing out the information of this meeting and the email address, and the stories I heard about vehicles of their cars falling off, and they're going up and over lots of bumble, I've lost three shocks. The road is rated for thirty miles an hour, I would wager you probably could go five on that road now. At some points, it's a really a hazard, the road is broken up, and there's some very large divots in the road, and the cement and the tar is breaking open, and I agree with Mr. Murray, it's, it's nothing getting better, it's just going to get much worse, and I feel so sorry for those poor blind guys, because it must be just horrible if they have to go down that road. I encourage you all, if you don't work, just to take a line up to it, and, and just try to go ten miles an hour on it. And watch how people drive on, people driving in the middle. When I was, when I was taking these forms out, I saw a woman driving down with one, one wheel in the dirt, just avoid the holes, I mean, you can't ride a bicycle down the damn thing. That's creepy. You can't ride a bicycle down there. And I just suggest that you guys all take a look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming on by. Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify? Okay. That was okay. And takes us to our action today's evening. Item twenty-four will be taken up in April, item twenty-five, yes?
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinance is Title one General Code, Chapter fourteen Rules and Customs, Article fourteen dash two Missile and Police Regulations, as applied to tobacco non-use areas protecting use of tobacco products in city-owned parking garages, as you did, um, with several revised amendments.
So let's do this, please. Any motion to, uh, revise orders?
Sure.
Motion made in second, I'll appear to say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, there's seven revised words in front of you. Is there a motion?
No.
Sorry, can I? Motion made in second, we're going to send to a discussion. See none? Move, move, so you can answer.
I'm, just, please, for just a minute, I'm against smoking, probably is much the same body, but I have concerns about our ability to enforce this. I'm not sure it makes sense to bother people who might be letting up as they get into their car, uh, and they're in the parking garage and the car windows up, so I'm going to vote against it, but.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm also concerned about the enforcement piece, however, I think the greater concern is the amount of revenue that we have spent to closing stairwells of the parking garage, and even before they were closed in, we had complaints about people staying in the parking garages throughout the day, and smoking, and causing people to have to walk through to smoke, so I'm actually going to vote in favor of this, just for the sole purpose of protecting the investment that you had, and listening to the concerns referred from people over the past ten years about smoking in the garage. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, there is a motion, I'll appear to say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. I'll send them.
Aye.
Questions up? Item twenty-six, please.
It is an ordinance amending the code of ordinance is Title II Traffic Code, Chapter eighteen Parking article eighteen dash three Parking meters, amending schedule time to establish a three-hour meter time limit for certain parking spaces located on Store Street near Dixon Avenue.
Much extended. Motion made in second, we're going to send to a discussion.
Flashlight glass, what I'm going to vote against this, I'm not actually opposed to the idea of creating three-hour lot, three-hour spaces in certain areas, but my concern at this point is, if we do it in a piecemeal fashion, we're not going to have a comprehensive plan, and so I would propose that we send this back to the parking committee, and perhaps take another look at a couple of facilities where we would anticipate businesses wanting to see turnover.
Thank you, mayn't else?
Thank you, Your Honor. With due respect to council, Fancy, the parking committee's been considering a lot of time discussing this, this request, and, and I, I'm going to be voting in favor of it. I think that it shows our responsiveness to the businesses. Store Street in particular is, has probably been going through a lot of changes in the coming years. Right now, I think it's difficult to anticipate where three-hour parking might be more of the event, ten-hour parking is there right now, and then that we're changing. This one is, it's also, a lot of people who work downtown are on Store Street still, and so the ten-hour space limit is more appropriate for the majority of the spaces in Store Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I would add to the council's and chairman's comments, I'll also be supporting this, and that the work of the parking committee, as far as I know, is that it will be ongoing in terms of, they go with the ten-hour versus three-hour parking spaces throughout the city. The parking committee improves the ten-hour initially in this area, but the whole point of the work of the committee is that it be fluid. Nothing's really set in stone, if there are new needs that arise or situations change, then we can be amenable to that for a period of reasons, the council will afford some.
Anyone else?
I just want to strongly encourage you all to look for this. In council, Fancy, I appreciate the idea and the concept of wanting to be comprehensive, but I think that you've done that as a, as a body, but one of the real benefits of having a elected body like we are, we're very flexible, and I think when we are approached by the small problems, we are not so big, we're not such a, not Manchester Nationalist, a big government that we can't respond to our citizens, and one of the plumes we have is that we can actually be flexible, and maybe we actually fix specific problems like this. So in this case, we are a normal business, and I think we also, I know we support retail downtown, we want to thrive, we want to be successful, because we want to give those people on the highway, in our community, and we want to shop downtown and such and so on, and go everywhere, but one of the things you'll see when, when they change the ten-hour parking, and they went from people parking there all day to move it to three hours, and we saw turnover, actually, my manager, the business owner, said, what? went to that with the business owner and said, what was the outcome? They said, the outcome was we actually doubled our sales first weekend, and we actually seen the turnover track. So, somebody goes in, they buy something, they run, they clear the space, and the rest comes in, as opposed to somebody just sitting there, parking there all day, walking down the main street, and not caring about the business. So, for the sake of supporting our retail community downtown, for being responsive as we are as elected officials, I strongly endorse this.
Anyone else? Is there any other question? I would prefer to say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
I had you.
Motion's gone down. Item twenty-seven.
An ordinance, amendment and code of ordinance, is Title Two traffic code, chapter eighteen, parking, Article eighteen dash three, parking meters, and maintaining scheduled expense for certain major parking spaces on Store Street.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, second.
Motion made in second. The group said in session.
I will not be supporting this one either. Again, sort of going to my concerns, and this one, I'm not sure it solves the problem that it seeks to solve, because I think these spots are going to end up taking up by non-residents. If you move your car, someone who's going to the car is going to take that spot and keep it all that. So, while I appreciate the concern about a problem that we need to fix, I'm not sure this is actually the solution to do it.
Anyone else? Other examples?
I'd say that I share that concern, although I'm willing to let the property owner and the neighbors try this and see if it works, and if it should give it a chance and come back. I agree. I do share.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I respect the concerns you've expressed by Council Fancie, Council Rice Hockins. I can say that when we were doing our narrow streets, we had hearings about parking in this area, particularly the development of the new common courthouse. I had neighbors of this individual who has a, I mean, I call it, uh, uh, come to me and expressed their concern over the impermeability of parking, particularly in New York's office spaces. So, I am going to vote in favor of this.
Anyone else?
I got the word from Council Kennesaw that it thumps it out, but I'm going to support this, I strongly support it. I was approached by a person who lives there. They have no parking, no parking driveway, et cetera. House comes, they have no parking, they park on the street. And, you know, obviously, we couldn't park on the street, they parked in the parking lot at the Bradley County courthouse. And when you could park on the street, they moved it up to the street, but there's still no parking. So, I will say that I do think there is one, in the sense that this may not be the perfect solution, absolutely not. But, right now, there's this significant problem of having someone who has absolutely no parking at all. And you know what? I'm going to admit I'm sympathetic to that. I'm going to tell you that I don't think we're so, we don't need to be such big buildings in the city to, you know, say we can't have any place to park. So, I think the best solution in all of this, is that, something I brought up with the parking committee, that we need to really review the extent in which we needed as many streets as we did. I don't think Court Street is seeing the parking we had in the past since we needed it. I don't think Store Street is seeing the parking that we had in the past, since we, years since we had in the past. We can go up and down there about the same time of the day, and all those spaces, for instance, on the south Store Street are completely, and it used to be completely reformed. Court Street, similar effect. We don't have as many cars, and yet we take this point and build a lot of pride on it. So, yes, I admit, this is not a perfect solution, but this is a proper solution. I think the land proper solution is going to be until we do, while we don't, in terms of parking meters. Pleasant Street would be another example. If you walk down Pleasant Street, there used to be cars parked up and down. Now, there's no one. Where do these people go? Basically, they go to the neighborhoods. So, I don't think that's a proper solution on this. That's my two cents. Counselor, please.
Thank you. I was on the parking committee, that really didn't think this was a good idea. And I don't, I don't think we're going to need to take a look at the overall, where we have parking meters naturally. But, my concern was that, though I, I feel this is a hardship to that room, it doesn't go solve the problem, and that there will be many other people in the city that have no parking. I just think it's not a good idea to call this a...
Counselor Kennesaw, would you, would you have any question?
Uh huh.
Would you have any question? So, I just say, it's not, you don't think it's a proper solution. What solution do you think the city should give, or?
I'm not sure we should give a solution that we wouldn't give to any other person in the city who needs it.
Counselor Kennesaw, did you have anything?
Yes.
I feel the way that I think yourself expressed in Counsel Rice Hockins, which is, it's not an idea, but something I think we should try. One that struck me is that, is there any way that we could identify the spots that residents parking only to somehow prevent, as there's the courthouse parking? That was a...
I like where your head's at on that, because my suggestion is going to be similar. If we aren't basing this on the state's happening, any parking numbers, the option is that we do want to make sure people are turning over. We could look potentially in the future, things like residents, things like that, and allow neighbors to park, but still have that turnover for others. I'd be supportive of, to counsel, this is concerned about, you know, cherry picking, who gets this. I do, I think I'd be responsive to any community that can afford this issue, so, no matter.
I heard a future member of the parking committee is what I... That was not me, but... I don't think we're... Just to perhaps answer the question that you posed to Counsel Kennesaw, echoing Counsel Rice Hockins, I think we need to at least consider the idea. And I know in the past it's been rejected, some sort of a residential parking permit for some of these areas where we've expanded the parking meters into places where residents do not have any other option for off-street, or their only option is off-street parking. And to go back to a point you made earlier, I have seen much of the parking that used to be on places like Pleasant Street, and it's now all up in the neighborhoods. And I bet many residents said, now, my streets are crowded now with cars. So, I think you, there's always going to be consequences of changes, and I'm certainly open to taking another look at some of the recent changes we've made.
Thank you. I agree this probably isn't a perfect solution. I'm going to support it. I do think that in the future, as we consider the major code change that's being discussed right now, that we should keep this in mind, but as we are considering allowing folks to put more in field development, that we just need to carefully canvass through that we're not creating more of these issues. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, is there a question? I would prefer to say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir? That's so exciting with everyone. Which one?
So, it's an ordinance, amendment and code of ordinance, is Title Two traffic code, chapter seventeen, vehicles and traffic, Article seventeen dash four, operation of moving vehicles, section seventeen dash four dash three, one-way streets concerning parking.
Oh, pardon. Motion made in second. The group said in session.
Yes. I just wanted to, thank you. I wanted to just thank staff for all of the time that they put into all of these parking changes, the community meetings, the mailings that had to all of the owners. I think that the staff is very responsive, and even, it's very much happened to me. Where I live, some residents weighed in with some concerns after the original, those on the committee and the administration staff really wasn't so flexible. Thank you for all of the time you've spent.
Anyone else? I would prefer to say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. I'm looking between that news.
It's an ordinance, amendment and code of ordinance, is Title Two traffic code, chapter eighteen, parking, Article eighteen dash one, stopping standing in parking, parking from hand to the, or given to all students and designated places.
Motion made in second. The group said in session. And then, I would prefer to say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. I'm looking thirty, please.
It's an ordinance, amendment and code of ordinance, is Title Two traffic code, chapter eighteen, parking, Article eighteen dash one, stopping standing in parking, section eighteen dash one dash seven, warning, parking, I'll give it adjourned certain hours and portions designated places.
Oh, pardon. Motion made in second. The group said in session.
Just, thank you. Maybe a question for the manager. That's appropriate. In terms of enforcement, how, how does the city enforce, or how do you approach enforcement when, when this is a big, going to be a big change for this package?
We will not do any enforcement until signage goes up, so tomorrow morning, we'll be putting work orders into General Services of our dearest step house tonight. Once the signs go up, we will, we will be gentle and give warnings for a period of time, for a few weeks, and then we'll start becoming more aggressive enforcement after that, I would say. We'll be, we'll be an eastern approach. It's the warnings at first.
Is it true that even before these changes were made, that commercial vehicles are now allowed to park overnight in residential areas on the street?
Yes, I believe there is one, and my member says there's an issue on Bradley Street with that right now. Yes. Is that issue continuing?
It is.
Good to know.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll put work order for that in this, but tomorrow morning.
And, Ms. Ross, thank you for all the time you spent on this, the teaching of the community, and all the outreach. I think you saw, and you're the property owners in the area.
Your fair welcome. It was a good process, and it wasn't just me. It was also Engineering Office, General Services, Mr. Chazley, please sit fire.
Good to hear. Good to hear. I would prefer to say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. I'm looking thirty-one, please.
A resolution appropriating the sum of two hundred and five thousand dollars for the project of road recovery for the self-project, project, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the New York State Bridge Program Fund, and authorize an addition to funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the local agency match.
Oh, pardon. Motion made in second. The group said in session. And then, we move. I would prefer to say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Have we seen that's your two thirds? Motion's adopted. And if I do this. You know what? So, it's not just two thirds. We're starting to work. This is what, it's what I've done.
Mayor Bullock?
Yes.
Council Chairman?
Yes.
Council Fancie?
Yes.
Council Green Sex?
Yes.
Council Hacken?
Yeah.
Council Keach?
Yes.
Council Fancie?
Yes.
Council Hammond?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Pierce?
Yes.
Council Rice Hocken?
Yes.
Council Todd?
Yes.
And Council Warner?
Yes. And motion down? Have we seen this renewed? Okay, item twenty-two, next?
A resolution appropriating the sum of two hundred and five thousand dollars for the books that turn right, bridge replacement project, accepting one hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the New York State Bridge Program Funds, and authorize an addition to funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the local agency match.
Oh, pardon. It's a, it's a discussion. So, now, we're moving on to the parking. Yes.
Mayor Bullock?
Yes.
Council Chairman?
Yes.
Council Fancie?
Yes.
Council Green Sex?
Yes.
Council Hacken?
Yeah.
Council Keach?
Yes.
Council Hammond?
Yes.
Council Hammond?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Pierce?
Yes.
Council Rice Hocken?
Yes.
And Council Warner?
Yes. Motion's adopted. I'm looking thirty-three, please.
An ordinance, amendment and code of ordinance, is Title One general code, chapter six, recreation rules and regulations for parks.
Oh, pardon. Motion made in second. The group said in session.
This one I'll sign off on. I'm sorry. Sorry with this one.
I would prefer to say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Uh, I would prefer to say aye.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents, in the annual highway improvement program project, CFP seventy-eight, and authorize the use of highway reserve funds in this project.
And, Counsel Pierce, I guess you have anything else?
I would, I would not. Do you have a minute, Michael? I have a motion, motion to do second, but you recognize speaking. First, I want to thank the residents who made calls, showed up this evening, and sent emails, and to meet their wishes, and especially the three hundred and eighty-two people that signed petition in eleven days, talking about the shape of Bob Road. I also appreciate the excellent work of the General Services Department. I understand his councils, and General Service intends to be the biggest pain in their butt when it comes to repaying our two hundred miles of streets. I think that's enough. She's enough. That said, I don't believe the city can afford away three more years for Bob Road to be built. I trust you saw the informational email regarding General Services estimate to restore the road fully, but we don't have the testimony tonight. While the condition of, well, you directed about petitions. This is just not a one-two issue that affects all or occasionally travel Bob Road. There are safety issues, and won't pay or likely viable issues too. Bob Road are likely never be a once every twenty-five year road, rehab project. The road's been there for many years. It's going to remain. Probably will never do ninety-five miles an hour again after it's fixed. And, but I agree, though, it remains to be the city's responsibility to keep it up to date. So, on behalf of the residents of Ward Two, and all our city residents who traveled back Bob Road for access to care, community, and commerce, I'm willing to reconstruction on all part of Bob Road beginning in 2020, that the initial funds come from delaying rehabilitation of some of the roads listed on the General Services report, or from other funds as recommended by the city manager. I ask this counsel to reconsider.
Second. Okay, motion made to second, two minutes. So, I just want to point out, could...
Yeah, I have a question, Counsel Pierce. So, Counsel Pierce, the number you referred to for the cost would be one point one five five million dollars?
Right. The initial rebuilding of, if I understand it, was nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And within the general way of building up the road and then first go down, and subsequently, it was ten, three years, and then another two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to go top of it.
Um, I don't have a number often that I did take the ride down the way, and I, I believe it stayed through. So, I am going to support this, and I would encourage the staff, the administration, to really take a hard look at some of the additional streets in town that have been proposed for early ones, is how I understand the conditions. I would say that Liberty Street, section of Liberty Street that were added are very much needed, not to mention all of the other streets that are listed, but I would, I would urge you to take a hard look at which of those streets could lead to that Bob Road that's going to be happening next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of questions, either for the city manager or the General Services, in matters of need. My understanding is, is that there's a reevaluation of roads every two years. Is that correct?
Correct.
I have a moment. My understanding with the report that we received, or an email we received from Counsel Pierce, with regards to the administration wanting to wait until 2022, 23, was because it hasn't been twenty-five years since we repaid the road. So, the last time this was evaluated, is the twenty-five years taken into consideration, or is it the condition of the road?
Condition of the road.
So, the condition of this road, given the situation that it is, waiting until it's twenty-five years old, does that make sense? Is it for budgetary purposes, or is it we think that the condition of this road is going to survive another two fiscal years?
Condition of the road that can survive today. So, no, it is something, I have the twenty-five years as a concern. You, you're, what do you... You, you're, you're, what you, what the city council has decided on past is, uh, after consultation with city staff, twenty-five years is generally the subject. In this year, what you'll get for the, it's not a year, some, what you'll get twenty years, some of the years you get twenty years. On twenty-five years, if you fund for a twenty-five year cycle, eventually you should have enough money to do all the roads, keep them in passing condition. Situation you're in now is that you haven't funded for twenty, for a twenty-five year cycle for four years.
We have four years.
So we're behind. So even if you fund it for a twenty-five year cycle now, you still do not get the roads in the twenty-five year program because you have so much to catch up to do. So that's, so I, so I would, straight from your mind, so twenty-five years is why this is, this is two years to do. That is something to do. Okay, I would like to answer the, I just have a couple of comments. So, twenty-five years, you're asking, what's the one?
Uh, the initial rate would be nine hundred and thirty thousand.
Nine hundred and thirty. Then, so it's the two hundred and seventy thousand is for the compact to do the overlay afterwards, right?
Yes. I'm not sure that it's two seventy, but it's, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand is the, is the overlay, the full overlay.
Okay. So then, um, there's somewhere around, around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so you take all, so what you're suggesting is all the streets
As worst condition as Bob Road is. But the idea is, those are recommendations, if you do those roads, they will become Bob Road. Because if you look at this last sheet, this page three, one of those roads are right now prograined for this coming construction season, really for the following construction season. So those are best, unless you program it, well, not additional dollars, when it comes in, those are programmed for a couple of years down the line. So, if I could just put more little comment. So, the idea here, what you need to do is you take the $750,000 from that road, that's the third item from the engine drive. Again, I'm not promising anybody can work any of those roads, you're not taking away anything from anybody. And you need to go, and you probably want to go to that top list and choose $180,000 worth of roads there. So unless the city council wants to start engineering, let some of the Bob Road get done, which such as don't, which is not a good idea, you'd be best to say to staff, we prioritize field through Watkins, and take what dollars you need, the $180,000 out of that there, and do what you can with those other streets. And then you program the ones you can't get done into your future road program, which you want to do anyways. So, otherwise, I could give you the prices of all the streets, and you could probably play, and work and determine which road you want to do, which road you don't want to do. And that's very bad.
Thank you, I too want to thank the residents who showed up and testified, it was compelling. I also want to recognize the efforts of Councilor Pearson, Councilor Todd, and Representative Bennett, because being able to bring attention to an issue which prior councils have been unable to do. Bob Road is absolutely terrible. I've driven it twice now, since, so although the last week, I've also driven every other road, digging in that section that we were covering, $3750,000, they are needed. The city manager actually spoke to something I was going to mention, which is the difference between shim overlay, coal overlay, and a complete reclamation. What concerns me about moving these, moving Bob Road ahead of these roads is that this is part of the neighborhood payment program, there've been tacit promises and even other prosecutors made that were trying to address these streets, they need to be done. That having been said, I think the maybe a way to move forward with this, again, recognizing all the work that's been done, which is to continue where the neighborhood program has its currently designed, in beginning, here very shortly, in the next couple of months, we're going to take the capital project for the upcoming year. Based upon the sheer length of Bob Road, and the fact that it's a full reclamation, I believe the best way to tackle this problem is to move that Bob Road project up and tackle that with the next fiscal budget. It does, it absolutely needs to be done, I know there's probably be worse road than I have driven over, most of the last several ones. If that needs to be done, I just think that in some way, a rocky path, PayPal, let's do it in the upcoming capital project. With that, thank you.
I just wanted to verify the reclamation, that is the most expensive of all, that's the whole chart.
Thank you, I seconded, uh, Mr. Pearson's amendment, and I do support it, but I recognize Councilor Nianton's comments here as well, and if they should be just provided by the city managers, I'm ready to have some of your opinion now. I'm just wondering, is there, if we were to do as Councilor Heinz suggests, would there be a way to, not too expensively, be able to make certain repairs to Bob Roads, make it a little bit more travelable than it is today? Or is that, is the road just so far gone, and you're just wasting money, you just can't do anything to it?
I would say any money that you invest, size reclamation is your waste of money. It's that part of it.
Thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate Councilor Nianton, where you're coming from, and particularly Councilor Hudson, that looking at the overall budget is probably the wisest choice here, that I think that we would be sending the wrong message, that the road is in bad shape, the road was in bad shape last year, it was in bad shape the year before that as well. And I think that cooler heads prevail, in that we want with this solution during budget cycle, to get this taken care of, and move this up sooner than 2023. I don't think that's combined. So, I appreciate your opinion.
So, I'm just curious, so if you can feel, if you think we can handle the Bob Road reclamation process, which is absolutely true, no question. But if I remember correctly, whatever we decide tonight is going to happen this summer. What everyone doing, the budget's going to be pushed up, so probably next or something. So, why couldn't they do the streets, the other streets during the budget process, as opposed to Bob Road?
Do you have a solution, Your Honor?
Yes, I understand.
Because I have a good dear solution, if you have a solution, I'm in.
I would pretty much wait for that one to say. I'm not going to touch that.
So, I just have a, I have two questions. So, the first question, just to clarify from the city manager, if we were to change our priorities and make Bob Road the priority, would we still be able to get that worked out in the summer? And then my second question, which I'll direct to the manager, is probably better for general services, if we invest this amount of money into Bob Road, is it actually, is it going to last in good condition, or is this just another issue we're going to have in 10 or 15 years? Is there something inherent about the road itself, or can we do it right such that we have to address it for another 25 years?
So, I think this is one of those roads that we've named, but one that doesn't last 25 years, just because it's all the water, it really probably, otherwise it's really going to last, it's rich essentially. So, the last work that was done on it was 1999, that was an overlay, so it really wasn't going to last 25 years to the point of, because overlays don't last 25 years. So, this would be one of those where, in two, many roads in the town, in the city, then they'll last you 35 or 30 years, but there'll be roads that aren't going to last you maybe 15, where you're going to be having to probably back up there during the shim overlay out of earlier. This is going to require, as required, more work over time in the past. If you look at that area, there's been a lot of work done, as you mentioned earlier, of, of Bush County, who was done on the southern, and Hutchins, Fisherville Road, there's been a lot of looking at it, but a lot of that, some of those will last a lot of time, but this one here, it's money well spent, and it's not going to, it's not, you can't say you don't have to touch it for 25 years. You've been back, and it's a lot of, you're going to be back on those roads. It's still, you still got to do it. It's still about you, and at this point, putting any, if you're willing on it, or if you complain it, and then, well, you'll be three years if it look like it is today versus 25.
Again, I think we're all on the same page, we have to do this, and that's just in this road. I guess, do we go with Councilor Pearson's amendment, or do we go in the capital budget?
Can I answer that?
My question, in your amendment, did you mention the streets?
No, I, I, I think you should question, purposefully, I did not. And to, by being to Councilor Heinz's point, what the mayor said, I was also my intention. If we put it through the budget process, you know, my wish, and wish of what you've learned and tested, was to do this road now, not to necessarily take the place of these roads, maybe these roads can't be done through the regular budget, but put Bob Road here now, because according to general services, it is, not scheduled for 2023 and 2024 budget schedule. So, I'm not specifically saying, I need to leave that to the experts.
She had commented, wished them.
I just had a comment, that I don't think this can go on, I can't imagine this road would be.
I was really thankful last year, when we heard concerns of residents who were 10, and we heard a lot of the same things on our roads, fairly passable, five miles per hour, people are losing parts of their car. And for us, it was a public safety issue of some of those roads, you know, trucks or cars coming through, who aren't aware of the problems coming up on cars, and local families who are aware, or people who are seen pushed off the road because of the issues of roadway. So, I'll support any initiative that gets Bob Road repairs done this summer, because I think that it is truly something that we need in the community, and we have a lot of great, as was referenced in the testimony, on great local businesses that people are coming through Bob Road to get to, and we'll make sure that their seats is where we want them to be as well. And I'll just add, I was over at my son's daycare today, I'm over in there, and they day, over in Ward 10, and Bob Road came up, and I heard one of the childcare workers say to another one, oh my gosh, they have a petition up on Bob Road, you have to sign it. So, I heard that, and I said, well, what happened on Bob Road, or what do you live over there? Said, no, they go over there, and they're talking about, it is that she lost her bumper craft in half last month, going down the road, and so, you know, we have a lot of people in the community that are traveling on it, and those are stories I think are pretty prominent right now.
I have one question, perhaps, Mr. Chesley, you could refer us. It matters statistically, even if we put this money, could it be done this summer? I mean, it has to go up to here, and.
I think the manager's going to answer that. Do you cover the manager, Mr. Chesley? Okay, you have an amendment for us? What's your basis?
Thank you, Your Honor, it's very clear, I think our road, even one of our friends won't be as good, and it's hard, the worst street in our city, and it's asked to be one of the worst. I support any efforts to change it, I think it's an absolute possibility.
I had the fortune of this portion of going down and brought this weekend, and I've been down it in many, many months, and it was actually worse than it was described in it, so, I would be in favor, and I'm not sure exactly how the amendment is written, but I would be in favor of taking the $750,000, plus some portion of those streets that are on page three of the report, and putting that money towards doing the first piece this summer.
That's how I understand it, is that how you want to do it? Thank you, Your Honor. We're 382 people with their names on a petition, and most of them are competent, it gets my attention, notwithstanding my experience is on Bob Road as well. I'm cognizant of Councilor Nianton's concerns, however, that we have to be careful about when we change schedules that our engineers, our general services department, which again, however, this, you know, and I'm also thinking about Councilor Lance Hawkins, and I certainly was one of the people who was very eager to have some of the really terrible streets in Ward 10 repaid the last cycle. So, I think we have to do something, you know, Councilor Pierce has been diligent about this, and that's extremely responsive to his constituents, and he heard while he was campaigning, and what he served subsequently through this petition, so I would like to see us come to a solution as quickly as possible to correct the situation of Bob Road.
Good question, so, you mean, these are the worst seven streets, so, you mean, they will kind of, you know. I don't, you mentioned Ward 10, and so, I'm very aware, so I kind of spoke, you know, pretty heartfelt, I think we can address this through the budget process. Interesting what Councilor Warren has to say, some of these streets, most of these streets are, I didn't hear Warren, sir, I don't know if you've spoken to anybody and say, hey, your streets are getting paved this summer, and now you have to go back and tell them otherwise, but.
That was a difficult situation.
That was the tough discussion, and I kind of cautioned the other council that you're going to be in this situation, you're always steering clear of coming forward and saying, again, this street's more important than yours, because the engineers have done their work, and I think in many ways, we're setting sort of a bad precedent going forward. So, again, I, this isn't a particularly difficult issue for me, I speak heartfelt, and there's a way to do this during the budget process. I believe in that.
I'll be going against this mainly because, as Councilor Nianton stated, it's not precedent. I've driven many years in Ward 10, telling people, be patient, you're on the list, I'll get you, it's sort of a kind of a box, and I can't tell you how many calls you're going to get about this street, that street, why, why does this get special attention? There's no doubt about this fall shape, but I'm not prepared to change course, I think it's a bad precedent.
I'm in the same boat, we're hoping it's through the budget process. It's a lot of money that we're, you may approve of, and we actually don't have a written command, it just seems to me that I'd like to be more careful. I'm operating that money at this time, though I am reading that it's to be done, and it's actually, it's supported in the budget process.
Thank you, Your Honor, I, I'm going to support it, and I think one of the main reasons is something that Councilor Chandler referenced, that we all petitioned the folks, and I think it, general consensus about this road, well, it'd be the petition. I've heard from folks in my ward for years about this road, and I think this is really a situation where we knew this was an expensive project, we wanted to focus on some of the smaller neighborhood streets, that was the plan, that was the program, but in many instances, although you're looking at it, and the distance of any would service a neighborhood street, it really is, because of the areas that it services. And I, I think that in terms of setting the precedent, I would agree, I'm sensitive to that, except in this particular case, it's not a situation, I think, where I need to get the advice of the engineers, or get some extra opinions on how bad it is, I think many of us have spoken tonight, that you just drive down the road, that's all you need to know, that it's just horrendous, so, I don't, I don't really see a particular concern about that, only because of this particular road and how bad it is. And I think frankly, that by supporting this tonight, if this does pass, the amendment, I think probably from here, we're going to hear the big hurrah from Hennecup, and elsewhere in the city, about doing this as soon as possible, thank you.
So, Councilor Pierce warned to have Bob Road, excuse me, Bob Road done, this construction season with full reclamation, have to make classes about $930,000, funds would come from $750,000 from the city, and then the city administration would somehow come up with the additional $180,000 for the streets listed at the top of that thing.
Is that where you're going to motion?
Yes.
I appreciate everyone's, uh, comments, as I've come to know you, and you're on very, very well, as well.
Thank you, Your Honor.
If I vote, I'm going to answer a question, but.
I concur with Councilor Nianton's idea about the budget process, this road does need to be addressed, there's no question about that, but how is the final, for me, and I think we can revisit this during our capital improvement, deliberations, dog voting.
It's not going to change my vote either way, but I thought I heard a little bit on the amendment that to take the funds from this list, or should the city administration find other funds available?
The purpose of the amendment is to have city administration manage the funds, whether it be $750,000 here, or, I don't want to say those last ones, I specifically would not mention the roads that I don't think should be paid, or should be placed, knowing, of course, that that would result in that. And if I may add, when it comes, when it comes to the capital improvement program, the roads that aren't done with this, we can be, they can be discussed then, so I'm just reversing the process, and I would be supportive of doing that, the budget process, to, you know, reinstate some of those roads, but I, as you heard, on behalf of the city, we'd like to get Bob Road, not expect them now, so there's no chance that that gets pushed out.
So, I'm going to support the amendment, and I have, I've always personally been extremely guarded for the process that we've gone through, as Councilor Keats has said, as Councilor Nianton said, and some others have said. The difference of where I think, where I differ from Councilor Keats and Councilor Nianton, is that I don't think we're going to have a situation where someone that comes and goes, you went with my street, you should have done my street, because the list in which is affected, the both of us actually, none of these were in our CIP projects to be done this year. This is all just a wonderful surprise that we came up with this list. So, if you were telling me that it was going to come from the page two streets, I'd go, no way, no how, you're absolutely right, precedent is precedent, done, I'm with you 100%. But the fact that you're coming from the list on page three, where this is, those residents have not been told, they have not been led to believe that this street is going to be done, so that's why I don't think it really, really affects the precedent and the process the way we did, I think it's very different, that's number one. Number two is, much like many of you, I drove Bob Road, I've driven Bob Road a lot of times, I tried to ride a bike on it, that's challenging, you ride a bike is challenging, but, you know, I don't know, I don't know if you've died, but, when this road is light, you get the daylight, you're ridden at night. It truly has got to be even worse than the city by heart. Sounds very sexist, and said, you later judge my, this is the bottom of mine. So, you know, look, I have friends who live on Canton Liberty and Park Ridge, I do, and but I've also seen the growth that's occurred on Bob Road, between the vineyards and other roads are a little out there, and I'm going to be really honest with myself, you know, this road should have been done a long time ago, but the fact is, that Councilor Pierce has been able to bring this forth, bring it forth in a cooperative manner with everybody here, and I think it's probably due, it's due time, and we just can't do it. We will take these other streets up at the CIP, my hope is that we will find the life of the business. If you have followed along with coronavirus, you've noticed that there's actually an oil plant between Russia and Siberia, and we may be all beneficiaries of cheaper gas and such, obviously, that we're just going to meet the cost of the virus plant, there's real impact upon oil prices, and I suspect we may actually get just as good deal, if not a better deal, with some of the costs that will be going this year in the CIP. So, it's my hope that we'll be able to do more of our research than we do, could you guys laugh at all of this? You don't like my economics?
I'm just very impressed. No.
So, I think we're going to get good prices this year, I think we're going to get back to these streets, plus to where we already have, and as you know, when we do have priorities here today, we talked about the importance of a street paving, great value, it was a cruel priority to us, so, I think this addresses a priority, gets street done this thing for a long time, I think we're going to get to these other streets, it doesn't affect the precedent, it will work within the past, so for those reasons, probably what much I missed, I think it's time to go this. Councilor Keats?
Very, I think you noted it very well, and made it out, so I understand.
So, we're going to have some questions, questions on the amendment, all fans say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so, we have, we have motion, it's basically not fast as amended, but pretty much replaces the whole, except for deciding the administration to go through and to look at the top list, to prioritize based on need, that's the way I understand it.
I had a question for the city manager about, I think, a street that's not on the list, and wondered if you could just briefly speak to North State Street, in the area of the Brooklyn kids, and why that is not on the list.
City, should that come forward? Any update on the drainage project?
Absolutely. Can you, so, the question was, why are we not paving North Main Street?
Yes, there's some residents in that area that are wondering, when, why do people come to that, I understand it's related to the drainage work.
So, the drainage project, a year and a half ago, did go all the way down that historic section of North Main Street, the project we're doing, the project that we settled on, will not go down the section of North Main Street. Last, last summer, the gas may have been down North Main Street, so, so at this point, we're not going to be disturbing that historic section of North Main Street, and it should probably go on the list. Anyone else? Is anyone ready for the question, or the motion? Everybody clear on the motion? All right, all fans say aye?
Aye.
Guys have it, and we've seen the necessary two thirds, the motion's adopted. Takes us to unfinished business, I have nothing coming off the table, all right? Okay, takes us to comments by councilors, anybody have anything to share? Probably stuff this way, all right?
I'd love Pay by Phone, this is a fantastic app, to go downtown and just plug in that number, and pay for your parking, and back away, is glorious, please get Pay by Phone, you will be so happy. That's it. Would you like to add your license plate, if you'd like?
That's a great signal.
Thank you, Your Honor, I was just going to come in with the city manager and the general services department, recently I was at the state representative, contacted me, she had found some graffiti that was Swatka, actually, Sulu Swal's French, she'd contacted the DOT, hoping that they want to address it, DOT let them know that, in fact, Congress told us that we're agent, and they can address it. So, I did share with the city manager, and less than 24 hours, the end of this night, we're getting one set dressed, and she's very grateful for that, and the city representative as well.
So, the US Census is being released this year, it's actually going to kick off later this week, and will be a series back to me next two months, reminding our parents to feel that help, and I have been part of the statewide census council committee, mayor's asking me to find opportunities that may come up through that, and the city called for community support, and making sure we get a fair, adequate count here in our city, so I'll be reaching out to you in the coming weeks, as we go through your neighborhoods, and we partner with the census, on how to make sure we're reaching everyone here, and getting that count, and we need for allocation of services and funds throughout the years.
Manager, do you have a minute?
Sure.
Okay, seeing more comments, we have suspense items, can I get a motion to go into non poll session to discuss, uh, property opposition?
Agreed.
Okay, in second, all fans say aye?
Aye.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.